Good evening. We're going to call the Lepore County Council Regular Meeting for June 22, 2020, to order. If everyone please silence your phone and stand for the pledge. Mr. Quinn?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic of America, with its finished, united, sovereign, people.
Roll call, Madam Auditor.
Mr. Garner?
Here.
Mr. Mullenauer?
Present.
Mr. Novak?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
Present.
Mr. Santana?
Present.
And Mr. Yagelski?
Present.
Cora is present.
Thank you. Approval of the June 22, 2020 Agenda, and you should have received an updated one this afternoon.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Quinn, second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next is approval of the May 22, 2020 Minute Meeting. Meeting Minutes.
May 26.
What did I say? 22nd? Stuck on that 22nd. June 22nd. May 26, 2020.
May 26.
Right.
Ooh, I.
This is where we'd make a motion, gentlemen.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right. Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by?
Santana.
Mr. Santana. Is there any questions?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Yes.
Mr. Santana, could you please acknowledge yourself, because I think people at home know who the iPad is. If you do second it.
Absolutely. Yes, yes, I'll do that. I apologize. Randy made mention of that, so each time I do, I will say Councilman Santana. Thank you.
Okay, all right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Public comment. Public comment is now open. Anybody from the public would like to speak? Anybody from the public that would like to speak? Anybody from the public that would like to speak? Hearing none. Public comment is now closed. Department head report? Department heads? Report? Any department heads? Hearing none. Liaison reports. We'll start with Councilman Santana on Zoom.
Santana here on Zoom. No, I don't have a report right now. Again, most of our departments, as everyone's been keeping up with, knows the going-ons and outs. So, I mean, obviously, lots going on with EMS. EMAs busy as heck, our maintenances. So, even though I didn't have anything, that's about all I've got. Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you. Mr. Garner?
Yeah, I've been talking with Sheriff Boyd. Basically, he brought me up to date a little bit on the meal money. So, everybody's saying it's about $1.45, but actually, only the meal cost is 75 cents of that. The other 70 cents is towards labor, which last year, we did take care of that by hiring that outside firm. So, actually, we should have some money coming back to us here in the next few months. So, it's been a good program. And then he did discuss the three postcards that he has actually lost out of service. So, he'll be talking to you about that. So, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Mullenauer?
Just the usual Zoom meetings, and I did get a chance to go tour the EMS base last week, and very nice facility, and I think the employees there appear to be very happy with it. So, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Yagelski?
Yes, the last meeting there, we brought up about the iPads slash computers that were given out during the COVID-19. Six of them have been returned. Two of those went to Judge Bergerson's office for the completion of his order.
Great.
The other ones, we'll keep track of. I have a list of them, and if anybody wants the list, I have it. But we'll keep track of the list for future computers that have to be replaced.
Great. Anything else? Mr. Rosenbaum?
I'll just say that I've been in touch with my departments. Nothing needed to be reported at this time.
Mr. Quinn?
I attended, like many of you, several of the COVID-19 Task Force meetings over the past month, and commissioners' meetings. Wanted to bring to everybody's attention, last week, I also attended and participated in our quarterly county health insurance strategic meeting, at which Dr. Cora and Barb Mossman and I discussed with our health insurance and care coordinators, certain modifications to our plans, which will be rolled out to members over the next few months through Human Resources. Nothing earth-shattering as far as changes, just little tweaks here and there. So, you will all get that information as those are rolled out. But I wanted to mention a few highlights from our meeting, and some different things over the past couple of months. One of which is the implementation of our APTA Pharmacy Care Coordination. This is a program which helps our members basically review their prescription drug benefits for cost savings by switching to generics or alternative medications that meet their needs with the approval of the members and their physicians. And this program, just to give you an example, it saved the taxpayers of our county more than $33,000 in March alone. And that's just by monitoring the certain prescription medications that have been prescribed by physicians, looking to see whether there are alternates or generics available, and, you know, working with the members and their physicians to make sure that, you know, those prescription alternates serve their needs. But cost savings to the county of $33,000, more than $33,000, just in the month of March alone. Similarly, our coordinators discovered, have discovered and worked with certain members to achieve savings of nearly $150,000 this year in infusion therapies. These are folks, you know, members and their families who are receiving certain infusions by, you know, locating and modifying the care that they're receiving. Instead of going to more expensive outpatient treatments at a hospital or a doctor's office, some of these folks have been able to receive, with their approval and their doctor's approval, in-home infusions, which, as I mentioned, has saved almost $150,000 this year for the taxpayers. So, this type of care coordination, we asked a lot of questions about it, because we didn't want to jeopardize the care that our members and their families are receiving, and we have been satisfied that that is not the case, that we're not jeopardizing the care. But in many of these cases, they're receiving equal or better treatment at a significant cost savings to the county. So, that committee will continue to work to find cost-saving solutions like these, and continue to provide quality care to our employees and their families.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Novak, can I add one?
Sure.
Yeah, this is bigger for Sean. Mr. Quinn highlighted all the information about the Insurance Committee meeting. I really want to emphasize this infusions being done at home has led to significant cost savings. So, I just wanted to thank everybody involved in that process. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was that we are, as we get into open enrollment with the help of Human Resources, we're going to encourage annual physicals for all the staff and their family members who are enrolled in our program. As most of you know, the annuals or wellness physicals are covered 100% without any copays or deductibles. And so, we want everybody to take advantage of that. And what it does is, it also helps detection of conditions early on, and that will help prevent further expensive treatments down the road by catching things early and then taking care of them. One other thing I also wanted to mention was, in terms of immunizations and everything, to also, again, make sure that they take advantage of it. Lastly, we have been doing this telemedicine. Telemedicine has become very popular, especially after COVID-19, and we are going to explore telemedicine as an option for behavioral or psychiatric issues, because sometimes it takes a long time for individuals to get an appointment with a psychiatrist, and telemedicine can be one of the options they can utilize to get a quick appointment. And one of the things they brought up was that they are going to have the same person or same provider continue to follow them for behavioral help, because that continuity of care is kind of important. So, I just wanted to add those few things to the details that Mr. Quinn has already provided. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doc. This last month, obviously, the FMAC, we've had continual meetings on PPE and protective equipment, different things. We continue to have the countywide Zoom meeting on Thursdays at 3:00. If anybody out there in the community leaders want to participate, they can. In an interesting fact, so, obviously, everybody's been kind of locked up this earlier part of the year, but some of the access Lepore County, the ALCO status, stats, for June 22, as of June 22, 71,191 people have visited the video on demands to watch meetings, whereas last year, for the entire year, there were 53,000 total for the year. So, they anticipate that it's going to exceed 100,000 people viewing. So, reaching the people in Lepore County, which is the purpose of ALCO TV, seems to be doing its job, so. With that, we'll move on to new business. Consider retroactive approval of Council President's authorization to hire replacement position for equipment operator for the Highway Department?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Garner?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mullenauer. Is there any questions? They had a person retire, so. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Old business. Consider additional appropriation in the amount of $250,000 from the general fund or ceded or emergency reserve fund for the OKRA grant. A motion to support was made at our last meeting, so we just need to, since we didn't advertise, we need to now fund that.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. President. Santana here, that is, again. And then I would, after waiting for the second, ask the auditor what would be best for this. As we all know now with the presentation, it is going to be reimbursed, so it's just a matter of a timeframe where it just gets put back, so.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Santana?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mullenauer?
Yes.
All right. Is there questions? Madam Auditor, which accounts best?
Let's take it from the emergency reserve.
Is, is that, I don't know that that qualifies for emergency reserve.
Mr. President, point of order. We helped write the rules for it. That does not qualify for that.
Correct. I think it needs to be deemed an emergency unless.
Okay, well, let me skip the general fund.
I'd like to know where that came from. My second question, I can know where that came in the first, this is a council's agenda money that we appropriate. There should be nobody coming in front of us asking for that money on that account. It's up to the council to decide that account. So, I'm very upset seeing that on here. This is not a free-for-all cash flow.
Right. Well, so, what was your other, you said?
General fund.
General fund?
General fund. I'm always in favor of the general fund. I would make that to reflect that, which is Fund 1,000.
Sounds good. Is there any other questions?
Just get the second that says that.
I already got it.
Well, I know, but that it's coming out of this fund. I don't know.
Oh, all right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Just so, for clarification, the emergency reserve fund needs to be deemed by this council needs to be an emergency. That's how we need to, there's some guidelines that go along with that, so. That completes that. Correspondence, we have none. Ordinances and resolutions, we have none. Appropriations and transfers, the sheriff is before us tonight, request an additional appropriation from Riverboat or General Fund for inmate food in the amount of $250,000.
Mr. President, a motion to approve the $250,000 out of Riverboat?
We have a motion by Mr. Yagelski, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any questions? He's coming back for his normal allotment, so. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is community corrections. Request an additional appropriation from Riverboat or General Fund for Intercept Whole Body Detection Scanning Tech 84. The amount is $74,000. We have Judge Alaviso's and Director Brown, and just to introduce everybody, she's the new director out of Community Corrections. So, I think this is her first time before us.
Yes.
Lucky for you, so.
Which is why I'm here.
Right.
Thanks so much. As he mentioned, yes, I'm the new director out there. Been on probably about two and a half months now. Just want to share some of my background, if that's okay. I come from a criminal justice background. I did six years in DOC, eight years in probation, and now I'm with Lepore County. So, I'm looking forward to working with you all. Moving forward to, my goal and my dream is, as I said in all my interviews, was to make this one of the best in the state, if not the best. So, that's my goal, and I look forward to working with you all. Also, all of my education is in criminal justice, and I do obtain a master's as well.
Great. Well, welcome to Lepore County.
Thank you. So, I came here to talk to you about the Intercept Whole Body Detection Scanner for Tech 84. Since I've started here in early April, we have had two ODs, overdoses, that we experienced, which were on April 20th and April 22nd. And I'm so thankful to my staff, the way they responded to those situations. No lives were lost. Everyone was able to return back to the facility with no major issues. However, they did overdose and Narcan had to be used, and other sources had to be used to bring them back to where they were able to function and go to the hospital. So, we, in our discovery and looking through things, we discovered that they were bringing these things in through their anal cavities. And as we all know, that is unable to be seen with a physical eye. So, this is why the conversation began in my tenure. It apparently has been on the conversation for quite some time here prior to me, but I'm just sharing with you about my experiences here. So, now I believe it is time to obtain the scanner in our facility. So, we've done some research. They've reached out to me. They've been out to the facility, sat down and talked with me. We've seen where it could possibly be. And just to read some additional information for you as well, jail, prisons, community corrections are rapidly adopting these body scanners to detect weapons and contraband hidden into the body cavities and elsewhere on inmates, participants, visitors, and staff. Unlike the units used in airports, these scanners has a low level of any X-ray transmitted through the body, similar to medical exams that you go and you have. More than 500 such body scanners are now installed into our U.S. Correctional Facility. In Indiana alone, the Tech 84, the scanner we are requesting to purchase is currently located in eight community corrections centers and 15 county jails as well. We, some additional information as well is, this scan can be done in four seconds or less. It is a narrow width of space to what it needs for it to be housed in for a long period of time. It only takes a few hours to install. Once we order that device, they go ahead and put that device together, and then they send it out to us already installed, and they set it in place. So, it's only a few hours for that. They do train. Total of three days, if they're allowed to giving up, giving us to train however many staff that we can get done in that timeframe. No daily warm-up periods or anything along those lines. And once the equipment is ordered, we can have it in our facility in five days, or he said possibly even less if need be. So, if we order on Monday, we can possibly have that device at our facility on that So, the total amount, whoop, let me go back. We also looked at the one that is at the jail now, which is called the Secure Pass Full Body Scanner with the Cannon Company. It is much less than what we are, the device that we're looking at now, but that device size is too big to fit into the size that we have for the scanning area. So, I did send Mr. Novak a picture of where it would be going, and you can see it would clearly block the door, which is what we don't want to do. Okay? So, we did suggest to go with this one because of that reason. So, the total cost for this is $149,000. I have spoken with Sheriff Boyd to receive $75,000 from the misdemeanor fund. He had agreed, and we're just here to request the additional amount of the $74,000 from the council this evening.
Judge, you have anything you want to?
As you know, drugs in the community correction center has been a problem for two decades, probably. It was such a problem about a decade ago, when I had people coming to court voluntarily wanting to go to the DOC rather than community corrections, or stay in the county jail, because they had a drug problem, and they knew it was a recipe for disaster. It came to a head. I pulled everybody out of there from Circuit Court. Nobody went. Eventually, things came to a head, changes were made. It was part of the impetus to build the new building, was because there was just so many ways to get it in in the old building. Things have started to come back. You know, you build something, it takes a while, they figure out a way to get around it, and that's what they've been doing, even, you know, it's probably the old-fashioned way. It's not a nice way, but, you know, you don't stop that without a body scanner. We talked about this as much as four years ago. I think Dick Beal was looking at it. They were more expensive then. There was a plan that hopefully, as we had greater utilization of the community corrections, that we would be able to set some money aside to do it. Unfortunately, that plan didn't come to a head, and things started to get worse again. I've noticed since the new director's there, they've been having almost a zero tolerance policy. They've been kicking people out. They must be getting tougher, because people are also voluntarily escaping from there and not going back, which is okay, because then they, you know, they've kind of set themselves for a nice jail sentence, prison sentence. But anyway, part of the problem is, about the same time that we were looking to hire the director, I noticed that the amount of money we were getting in, in income from the participants, even though we had 15% or 20% more participants, was the same or less. So, I got the financials, and I did a spreadsheet, and it turned out that from the first quarter of 2018 to the last quarter of last year, we were collecting, we went from collecting about $400 per person per month in fees to $275,000. Now, what gives? Well, once I answered, asked that question, it was answered. The auditor and some internal staff figured out that they had one person in charge of billing, collecting money, and everything from the inmates. That person wasn't supervised, and as you know, everything's a sliding scale there. Well, that person apparently had just took it on their own to charge everybody the minimum. So, tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars probably went down the tubes, so much so that we actually owe the DOC money now. So, to wait now, since the director's been there, we're up to back up to $375 a month, so, yeah, so it's back to almost what it was. But that's just treading water and paying back the DOC. So, if we wait, who knows how many years it's going to be before we could build this. None of this, I believe, is general fund money. Is that correct? Our $74,000 is, what is it requested from Riverboat, or?
It's coming from Riverboat or General Fund.
Right. Oh, it's up to you then. And the misdemeanor money is also money that's generated by users. Right?
Right.
So, it's still a problem. There's some reticence on the heart of prosecutors to make it part of the plea with people who have drug problems to put them out there. And yet, that's, makes the most sense to put some people, because we could also give them drug treatment at the same time, in order to fully utilize that big facility that we have. It's almost imperative that we get the scanner in there.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Mullenauer?
First, I am in total agreement with the purchase of this. I'll guarantee you that. It's been needed, and I'm glad to see it's finally coming, requested. But I do have a couple of questions, and I was reading part of the information that you sent us, and there was a maintenance contract of $10,000 a year. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that going to be the first year? Or is there like a, usually purchases, like there's like a two or three, or maybe even a five-year warranty, that you don't have that? I don't know if that was.
From my understanding, because I did ask about that.
Can you, yeah, talk to him now?
From my understanding, when I asked about that, it was the $10,000 per year. So, that would cover one year.
So, you don't know though if it'll be the first year, or the second or third? And you know?
It would be after the first year.
After the first?
Yes, our first year recovered, they'll come out in new service checks.
Okay.
And then after that, if we pay the $10,000 for additional warranty, then they'll cover after that.
But it also says it's optional.
And it is optional, yes.
Okay.
And at that point, we would hope that project income would be able to.
Yeah. And the other question is, is, I know you mentioned they're coming in to just put it, to construct it, or to put it in?
Yes.
Is there any, I heard there was some other maintenance issues out there that are going to take place?
Yes, we spoke with Larry. He came out and did an estimate today. We would need our holding cell door to be changed to the opposite way, or to slide, or to open on the inside, or either just currently opposite way. And then we would need our glass doors removed, so they'd be able to bring the device in, and then they can put it right back on. So, he shared with me that would be about $16,000, I believe.
I think he said also, there's no electric in the room.
Correct.
And so, when the vendor came out, they didn't like look in the room and say, we need a plug to plug this in, or?
They said they needed a plug for the actual.
Computer.
Computer portion of it, which is, we can be moving that into different areas. So, under my understanding, where we were going to put it at, it was in our other room that's in the front by our window, by the offenders' doors. So, my understanding, the electric could run through there. So, I told him I was going to confirm that with Tech 84 Dennis Wolf, to confirm that, just to make sure. So, we may not even need the electrical outside the, where we had it.
So, there might be some maintenance or construction cost?
It may.
To get this in, well, obviously with the doors.
Yes.
We know that, because we're talking with Larry, I think he said one of the doors won't switch.
Yes, he said you have to change it.
Because it's beveled, so they're going to replace that.
Correct.
Do you have money for that additional cost, or?
Yes, we could cover that cost.
Okay. So, you're still before us, just for the $74,000 additional funds and the 70, permission to spend the 75 out of the joint account that you have with the sheriff?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Is there any other questions? Mr. Quinn?
What, I have a question about the use, the volume that you'll be putting this machine to use, and who will be subject to these scans? Just the folks that are participating, or would it be anybody from the public? Would it be employees?
It would include all of those. Public staff as well as participants. As you all know, it's a work release facility, so we have abundance of people that leave a day, and then they will come back in, they will go through the scanner, and anybody, any visitors, any meetings we may have, they all would be required to go through that scanner as well.
How many people per day?
We're going to say, per day, about 150.
Okay. Mr. Yagelski? Were you done, Mr. Quinn?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Yagelski?
I think it's great that, yes, the sheriff and the sheriff was able to participate in it, because it does help all the way around his area too. But Judge Alaviso's mentioned also the prosecutor. The prosecutor's got about $215,000 right now. I'd like to see, I would like, you know, did we ask him? Did we get any further with this? Because he has a whole lot of stuff into this, as much as everybody else does.
I did not speak with the prosecutor, no. Only the Sheriff Boyd and the advisory board, I spoke with them about it.
If anybody would like to make the motion, I would ask them if they would at least include that we would take some funding, maybe. we would take some funding, maybe, maybe a 75, 25,000 or some number. Ask for the prosecutor or something.
I mean, how, how can we spend discretionary money that's given specifically to a completely different office holder? The other situation is now you're starting to blend roles.
I didn't say, no, Judge Elvesis, maybe you hear my conversation. What I'd like to do is if we can't, then we'll pay for it, but somebody needs to ask. We can't sit there and go, hey, this is not a cash flow, we're going to have a lot more cash flow problems by the end of this year. So what I'm trying to do is just look at the best alternative I have. I, you know, this was kind of thrown at us, and I'm sorry, we're not, because these, uh, office stuff, I haven't been able to get as much information as you get from meetings. Usually I have the stuff ahead of time, so I didn't get as much.
Mr. President, I'll second that motion.
Was that a motion, Mr. Yagowski?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Garner.
We're just asking the prosecutor if he would like to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm agreeing with you, so.
Right. So, so the motion is for the 74,000 out of?
Out of, uh, uh, General Fund.
Out of General Fund. With, with the caveat that we're going to reach out to the prosecutor to see if he can.
And if he turns anything towards us.
Correct.
Support it.
So, so we, it's out of the General Fund.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other questions or discussions?
Yes, there is, Mr. President. I was waiting for the motion and the second and keeping it in order, and so, sure.
Who are you? Who are you?
Jeff Sant, uh, Jeff Santana, the Port County Council at large.
All right.
I'm in favor, let me, let me, let me say this, I, I've got a lot to say, as I always do. I'm in favor, but I am really not able to support this at this time. And, uh, but I got, I've got another solution maybe, or an idea for you guys to consider. And if that was the case, I would absolutely be in a positive affirmation, um, at, at, at that time. But, um, oh gosh, there's a couple of things to this point, and I guess one of it is, um, uh, okay, first of all, how many times have you or, or a part of that administration from Mr. Buell on, on that taken any of these, um, uh, what do we call them, um, correctional individuals, uh, over to the jail in order to get them scanned? Um, if you didn't know, I will tell you that that is an offer and it was a, I, I will say quite frankly, it was a selling point and it was a sales, uh, presentation that said, hey, not only will the jail be able to use this, as Mr., uh, Sheriff Boyd, uh, did, uh, and said, uh, but we, we are opening this up. I'll bring your attention, if you don't mind, to September 25, uh, 2017. And this was a meeting, and it says this, the office has reached out to correctional facilities. They went and had some visits with the closest being in Hamilton County. In addition, Sheriff Boyd has communicated with Mr. Buell of Community Corrections, who completely supports this. Sheriff Boyd also offered the use of the scanner to any of Mr. Buell's clients who he may find the need to scan. So I, I say that because this was, you know, brought to us that we're on here in 2017, and we took it at that. I, I'm looking at this, you guys, and I, and I've done a little bit more research, maybe, or maybe not. But anyway, they are saying that these machines will operate, uh, anywhere from seven to 10 years. Um, so I'm going to give them the benefit of the doubt, and let's say that it is a 10-year, uh, scanner, that, that we can get that life expectancy. Well, we're at year three with the one in the sheriff's department. I, at this time, again, because of spending monies, um, I, I'm, I'm just really reluctant to do. I would suggest, um, and I, I understand, because I even think that I heard that you said it takes two people to take the individual over to the complex. Okay, I got you. Uh, but if we can go another two years without installing one in your facility, now our sheriff's, uh, unit will be at the age of five. We get, uh, we get one out there. So what I'm doing, I'm trying to do a rotating, uh, system, still getting you what you need, but not tomorrow, not in five days. Um, that's just, uh, my, my thought, uh, I'm trying to see if I'm looking at some other, uh, notes, you guys. But, um, that's, that's kind of my, my thought process right now.
The sheriff, the one in? The one in, Councilman Santana, the one in the sheriff uses right now does not fit out at the Community Corrections. So you're, the rotation, I don't think would work.
No, 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 okay, Randy, thank you so much.
Is that what you were referring to?
It's like this, it's like this, it's like, you know, buying, um, so many police cars or so many ambulances, staggering them, if you will. I understand it doesn't fit, and we got two different machines.
I thought you meant when you said rotate, I thought you meant.
I'm saying that no, if you can bring somebody over there and they can scan. That's what the selling point was back, uh, three years ago, if you remember.
And that's, that's a potential solution, but where are the opportunity costs? Or even the fixed costs of bringing two people, bringing 150, using two people to bring 150 people a day to the, all the way from Ziegler Road to the, to here and back.
Mr. Bolnar?
And I, having a conversation with the sheriff earlier, he brought up, I think, a good point about the COVID-19. I don't think he wants that coming in and out of the jail like a revolving door. I mean, it's a difficult job as it is right now with, with trying to, to, uh, make sure people aren't sick coming in there, and if you got that going on, I think that may be a problem.
Then I would also like to add, we are currently using the sheriff's, um, scanner, and he's very open, he's an optimist to use that. But as already mentioned, it takes two officers to take any offender over to the jail. We sometimes only have three in the building.
So when you suspect somebody, you do go over and utilize that?
Yes, we do, yes, sir. We, we've been using it quite a bit since I've been on, because we had those two, um, overdoses. And then anytime, any, we time we hear anything, because my plea with the participants is, you know, if you know something, you tell us, tell us what's going on, so you won't be held responsible. So if we hear of a word of something that's going on, or somebody's in the facility doing something that we're not aware of and we're unsure, so we've ran several people over at 12, 1 o'clock in the morning. We've done that, we've had field officers come in and utilize the scanner, and he's been very open for that, and we've been able to use it, and we, we thank him for it, but we need our own.
Part of the reason is that's, you're using that to confirm something you already know. As opposed to actually filter out problems as they happen, because, um, the, the problem is if with, without it, you're going to always have drugs there and you're always going to defeat the purpose of putting people out there anyway. Because the people that are out there using it for property crimes are usually people with drug problems that you want to utilize the services of the counselors out there to hopefully give them a chance to rehabilitate themselves. And, uh, and i- if you're only getting 10% of what's coming in, you're really not, you're, you're going to get back to the days where people are going to say, I don't even want to go there because I know it's just going to mess me up.
Right.
Because I know, I know I'm weak, and I know that I, that it's too available there.
Mr. Quinn?
What did it cost the county, if you know, to treat those two inmates that overdosed?
Hmm, that's a question?
Well, probably, that's a little different because unlike the people in the jail, we're not responsible for their medical costs. Now, we do have, there is a contract generally for medical services, so maybe the initial contact was covered. But any hospital stay or anything like that, uh, would have had it been from their insurance or from, uh, the state insurance. Uh, but the actual have care of inmates only applies to, to people in the DOC or the, or the jail director.
Right.
So I, it's a good thought, but I don't think that applies.
Mr. Yagowski?
Uh, what's the age between the groups here that, the minimum age that somebody would be tested at? Going through a scan?
18, we can have anyone in from 18.
18, okay, because, just was curious, is there any type of violation? Because people would, it, it's, you know, age-wise, it's make sure, because you're doing a, a little more intrusive type of a scan than you would at the airport.
I did some research on that, and I asked him as well, at the, the guy from Tech 84, and he said there hasn't been any issues, I haven't found that there need to be any liabilities or anything like that.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
If, if it's a post-dispositional thing, clearly you've given up certain rights when you're sentenced. If, if they're predispositionally, they're there in, in lieu of a different bond situation, and they don't have to go there. They could post the full bond or do something else, so that, and they have to agree to the rules as a condition to even be there. So that would be one of the rules that you have to get.
I understand, thank you. Great. Is there any other questions?
Yeah, I do. Um, as far as, uh, 150 a day, I didn't think that, uh, the, that the whole 150 per day leave the facility. How many, uh, do you have right now, Monique, I, I think, uh, that, uh, that leave the facility each day? Uh, because they do have jobs? Can you answer that?
Well, that, I could tell you this, there's 60 people that are probably living there, and there are a lot of other people that are, that have, the problem is that the reason why you have that many is that counts visitors, that counts people who are on GPS or electronic monitoring or SCRAM, who have to come in periodically to report, or who come in to do the counseling services. It also includes the employees, visitors, and the 60 or so people who are there on a regular basis.
Right.
And the staff.
Okay, let me, let me say this again, because I know, uh, with Sheriff Boyd, and, and I apologize because I think, um, Councilman Quinn did ask you this. Um, did you say that you will be testing the employees of that facility on a daily basis? Or said you will not?
Yes, we will, we're not, 32 of us.
Okay, okay, because I will remind everybody too, that one of the arguments was about that, and you might, uh, you know, have to face this, but it brings the morale down. The, these are employees that work with others. Uh, we, we, we got a lot of different dialogue on that, is what I'm saying. And so I, I appreciate the fact that you're going to, because obviously it's just another means of getting something into the facility. Um, again, I, um, I, I love the idea. Uh, I, I am just very, very frugal with money right now. And if we could put it off for two years, that's where I'm at with it. And, um, but, but I know it's going to, I, I'm sure it's going to fly for you, and good luck. Um, and, uh, hopefully we can, uh, get some of that crap out of the, uh, system. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, is there any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
So we have two nays?
Yes.
Terry and Jeff?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct, yes, yes.
The motion passes. Next item is request permission to spend from Mr. Mean of Fund 1175 for the remaining balance of the Intercept Whole Body Detection Scan Tech 84 in the amount of $75,000. This is a permission to spend, so.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Quinn, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum, is there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Terry's a nay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And on a lighter note, I noticed earlier the sheriff came in, got a quarter million dollars, didn't have to answer a question, just like the old days, right, Mike?
Yeah, oh, yeah, right.
Good thing you didn't lead off with that one, Judge. Yes, Mr. Yagowski?
Yeah, could I, if you don't mind, could I just ask the sheriff a quick question at the podium? I'm sorry. Because of our paperwork and do a lot of stuff over the phone, I sort of misplaced my question that's going to ask me when you were up here. You, you made, you made a point of the savings of money. Of that money, can any of that money put towards the 250,000?
Yes. Are you talking about the unused salaries? Yes, sir, yes.
Um, I missed that one. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I'm talking to you.
I answered the question, I don't know what else you were going to say.
No.
Is there something I should not know about, or what?
No, I, I'm just agreeing with you.
Well, Matt, if we have that, um, I'm still saying we paid the 250, but can we, can we use some of the salary for that?
We would have to transfer that, am I right, Madam Auditor?
That's correct, and, and, uh, the chef and I talked about this earlier. Um, if, if you'll notice, um, or if you'll remember, he sent, uh, a letter to all of you previous to the meeting. And he talked about the savings, there, there's a savings, um, using the new food service, there's a savings of 182,396.73 because the employees are now being paid, excuse me, through the food service. So, um, my suggestion to Sheriff Boyd, and you, uh, pass this motion just, excuse me, a little too fast, I have terrible allergies, so I apologize. Um, so what I would suggest is that we take 150,000, um, and transfer it from his salaries to the food service, and then supplement that with 100,000 dollars from the Riverboat, if, if the sheriff and you all agree.
Sure. I'm fine with that here. Mr. President, I can, I can reconsider my motion and reconsider the vote, please.
So we need a second on that?
One and a second. You, you need a second, and then you all need to vote on that?
Correct, so Mike's willing to reconsider?
Modify to amend.
So, and all those in favor of reconsidering the vote, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, so what's your motion, Almar?
I'd like to make the motion 100,000 out of general with the 150,000 dollars being transferred, I'm sorry.
I thought we had a Riverboat.
Riverboat, you're right, you did, I'm sorry. Thank you, sir. 100,000 out of Riverboat, 150,000 out of salaries to be transferred out of the sheriff's department.
At our next meeting, because we'll have, do we need to advertise that transfer?
No.
You already have the appro, you already have the appropriation.
You said, no, we just need to authorize it, right?
Right, you just need to authorize the transfer and then also vote to appropriate the 100,000.
Correct, correct. So that's what we're going to do now, and then we'll, so can we do that all in one motion?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Sure.
Yeah. So that's all in your motion? Now second, it's all in your second. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Great.
Again, I apologize.
And you know what, I, I apologize too, because we had that conversation in the, just the minute, that's why when you turned around and looked at me, I was going, yeah, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We all get one of those face masks?
Yeah.
Sure, five minutes.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Yagowski?
Also with that same, uh, I don't, and Miss Winkie could probably answer. I think we need to send the letters to the AIC, or also to downstate to our legislators. As you know, we brought this up when the sheriff hired his own person. The law is antiquated with the rules of changing with food service and all that. If, you know, we're still stuck with, and there's nothing wrong with that. We, the previous, your wife did a fantastic job, and we're going to, and talked to her many times, but the rules are changing. If we go back, we're going to have to pay double, we're going to have to pay, if the new sheriff comes in, we're going to pay double. I'm not saying that right now, we, we just need to see if we can get our legislation changed to one way or the other. So I think that we need to contact the AIC.
Regarding the matron?
Yes.
Right. Can you make a note of that?
I mean, everybody agreed to that conversation, but we need to.
I can, but Mr. Yagowski's going to need to be a little more clear.
He, he will, he'll communicate that to you. I believe it, it has to do with the fact that the matron in the jail is, since we're outsourcing everything, that position is not being utilized like it used to be.
Really is not needed?
It's, it is needed, it's, but right now it's, it's being utilized to an in-cost basis of everything. In other words, the sheriff, uh, we don't have no employees, we don't have nothing, it's, you pay a price per, per meal.
We're paying per, per head?
Yes.
Right. And the matron's cost is absorbed in that, or it's part of that cost?
If we have a new sheriff who decides to fill that position, that's his right to, I'm not saying it's not. Then we have to double, we're going to be paying twice.
Right.
You might want to talk to the Sheriff's Association too, to see if they've come up with something yet or been questioned.
If you could do the other side for me, Mike, that'd be great, if you could, if you have some connections on that, please.
Great. Next item on the agenda is the Port County Assessor here requesting permission to spend from Sales Disclosure Fund 1131 for COVID barriers for the assessor's office not to exceed 16,000. I spoke with the assessor earlier tonight, told him he didn't need to be here, I didn't think it was necessary, so. We have a motion. This is a permission to spend out of his Sales Disclosure Fund.
Motion approved.
We have a motion by Terry. Seconded by?
I'm going to second, I'd like to second. Jeff Sant, Jeff Santana.
Seconded by Jeff.
Hey, but you guys, I, I got to ask you, I thought that we had this all under the umbrella of MGM of Michigan City.
It's all, it's, it's all, it's all going to go in for the reimbursement for the, the COVID fund, but we're just, we still have to spend the money upfront, so.
Okay, 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 I get it. Um, I just, uh, again, um, I was looking at these figures, and I'm like, really?[1777.26] I just, again, I was looking at these figures, and I'm like, really? For a piece of plexiglass?
It's not just a piece of plexiglass, but.
Okay.
Mr. Yagowski?
I'm hearing you. But, okay, yes, like I said, I seconded. I want to see it get done. I just was wondering, again, I don't know construction costs like that, so thank you.
Mr. Yagowski?
Yes. I'm not opposed to the ideas we came up with. But the problem was, is that, and we brought this up at the early meetings of the COVID issue. This free-for-all is ridiculous. I'm not saying that Mrs. Winski did anything different on the auditor, the assessor, or other offices have done it. But it's a free-for-all. The people that have the budget money, they're putting whatever they want up there. I think we should have had a unified, together group that said, we're getting this, or we're getting that. Very disappointed in this thing. This is, it's become a free-for-all. And I'm not happy with some of that stuff that they come up with cost-wise.
Just so you know, this has all been run through maintenance, so now, what's that?
I don't disagree with you. My complaint is not that. My complaint is, I know some departments have done this. Somebody needs air purifier, somebody needs, this thing has become, let's just buy whatever we need, and the council is not part of this agenda. I don't have no problem with what he's doing. I have a problem with the mythology.
And I've reviewed what he's doing, and it's a good barrier for the COVID and for protection and safety down the road. And these two that are on our agenda today, I'm not arguing with you about what you referenced in the other one. I think that one is kind of a totally separate.
Okay.
So, is there any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Quinn?
Are there any restrictions on this Sales Disclosure Fund about what it can be used for, Madam Auditor?
No, as long as it benefits the assessor. It can only be used for the assessor.
Okay.
Wow.
Thank you.
Great fund. Yes, Mr. Rosenbaum?
All right. Mark, we're going.
Microphone.
The point was brought up about what are we spending, what is $16,000 going to buy us? And so I don't know if Larry can come up and explain it to us, unless you wanted to explain it further. I understand it's barriers. There's now a new doorway, or where the end of the counter was. So I'm not 100% sure where $16,000 is going. And I think the public would like to know, too.
Well, and I'm just going to go broad on all the areas that we went to. We went and we researched each area for what they actually operated. We put, those areas included the glass that was put in and made it a barrier for all their countertop. In that $16,000, in that one particularly, it involved that we had to move some electrical outlets and some lighting in order to make this functional, and still make them work so that they could work on the countertop. It also involved the retrofitting of some doors, so the doors could be locked so that people couldn't just walk in and walk behind the counters. So it involved, you know, a little bit electrical, the glasswork, you know. There's a lot of things that got involved in every room, but each room had its own particular system that had to be put in. You know, the auditor had a little bit different than the assessors did. So not one was the same.
And with the report that we had from the marshal that went through with the protection and the safety and different things, a lot of this was recommended in there, and it kind of doubled.
Yeah, we took all that into consideration with what we were doing for the COVID safety part of it, too. So it kind of all worked its way back in together.
Thank you. I need everybody here then.
Does anybody have any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Six in favor, one opposed.
Who says the nay?
Mark, Mr. Yagowski?
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is Lapeur County Auditor requesting permission to spend from Dual Homestead Fund 7110 for COVID barrier and window installation in the auditor and real estate offices, amount not to exceed $12,000. Second, motion by Mr. Gardner, seconded by Mr. Mullenauer. Is there any questions? This is pretty much the same thing, the real estate office in addition to the auditor's office for this one, so. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay. Six to one.
Can I ask one more thing? I missed the end of the community corrections discussion. Did you talk about the cost?
She did. We did, and Larry asked her, and she said she's got the money to cover that.
So in her budget, she does?
She said she's got the money, $16,000, to cover the cost of the construction, is what she said right up here when we were talking to her.
Okay.
Is that, that's the way I understood it.
And that they would have the money for the 10,000-year maintenance out of user fees. That's also what we said.
The judge kind of indicated that once they get the user fees up and going back where they're supposed to be, that they could, they didn't seem to be worried about the yearly warranty maintenance fee, so.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Larry. Mr. Yagowski?
Mr. President, thank you. Why do we have Larry up here? Larry, what do we spend on 8th Street as far as security, safety, COVID?
Well, the setup at 8th Street was they were going to leave the doors locked and invitation, or they were going to set so that people called in when they came in. What we did is we took plexiglass over there, and we've lined their counters so that they could adequately see the people. If they do need something more, we have some more plexiglass on order that we can get over to acquire them with that. So we went over there and done those precautions there. But as of right now, we're understanding with the Health Department, they're going to keep the doors somewhat locked, and then it was take them in that way.
Okay, thank you.
I would also like to add that they said that they're going to have limited use because we had one person retiring from that office as well.
He's short a nurse. Correct. Is there any other business before the council? Council comments?
Mr. President, meeting for budget hearings, because I have to sort of plan for this.
Correct. Madam Auditor, Madam Auditor, Madam Auditor, Ms. Winski, sent out some dates earlier today for the budget hearings, and I think Mr. Yagowski would like to speak on that.
I'm just, just, I have no preference, really. I just have to be able to get my work scheduled.
The thing that we want to make sure that we have, Joey, and Christie, is we want to make sure that we have all the information that we need. So if we need to push it into August, we push it into August. So we don't want to do it early and then not have everything that we need.
What kind of things do you need?
Mrs. Winski, I'll make it, every time we've been moving this earlier and earlier, we do not get the numbers until the day of the event, or that weekend Saturday. It's just impossible for you to look at. So we need to get this stuff early enough that if the date, if you pick the date, and that's good. I have no problem with that. As long as we get the information, we get it at least a week.
So we want the binders out to everyone at least a week in advance?
Right.
That was going to be my next question. That's fine. What happens is we always have departments that, you know, the day before we're printing, they're coming in our office saying, I finally have it done. So I think what Christie and I will do this year is we will make sure that the cutoff date is two weeks prior to your budget hearings. But that's fine. Do you want to pick your date tonight, or how do you want to do that? Do you want to respond to me?
I think since everybody's here, we need to look at a date.
I'm not available at any time in August, so July is the only time I'm available.
Okay, so Terry is July.
Santana here is August.
Mark, what's the best for you?
I said I'm pretty much open. If there's a compromise, like, you know, you can, can we compromise like the 27th, 28th, 29th? I think we still should schedule three, because I think it's going to be a complicated
Okay.
budget hearing process. I'm just asking.
You're saying of July?
Yeah, sure.
July, 27th, 28th, 29th.
Right.
Yes.
Terry, are you available through Zoom or anything, or not at all?
It's not Terry.
Actually, I'm going to be getting married about that time, so.
Wow.
Probably not available.
So I'm assuming we shouldn't keep our calendars open, we're not invited? Is that what you said?
I think that's a good, yeah, yeah. I'll worry about food and then.
He's open in July, right.
How about Mike Mullenauer?
I'm good anytime. July is fine.
Okay.
July 27th through the 29th?
July is fine as well, if that's Terryism.
Sean?
Does that work?
Yes, that should work. July should work.
Randy?
I'm fine with either. I'm still trying to get over, we're not invited to the wedding.
What were the?
We're moving it up so we can be invited now.
Actually, I think July has it, and I can still make that happen, too. So let's do that. But I think you got my email, and I hope for some that haven't been through any budget hearings or whatever, too. We pretty much got this nailed down where we have so much time sometimes, or usually, where we have downtime, we have too long of a lunch. Can we get it in and get it done? And very rarely, I know Mark did say the third day. But, well, I'm going to tell you what, in seven and a half years, we have not used a third day, so go ahead.
Mr. Yagowski?
Real quick, Jeff, because I have to home and everybody here. What I'm worried about this year is the budget itself. And I'm doing as much as we have. Jeff, I would be very bold to go ahead and say, I'll say out loud, a lot of these departments are closed. I don't know the purpose of having some of these departments that we have on Michigan City. Maybe Michigan City should only be Monday, Wednesday, I'll pick something. I'll pick or Tuesday, Thursday, or once every month. I don't know. Because I think that we've got to a point here that we learn to live without the stuff. This isn't the only organization that does it. Steel mills are doing it. I know that Nippsville has done the same thing. They're learning to live with less people because people aren't coming, you know, they don't need the people in the area. So I think that we have some tough numbers to pick. And I'm sorry, some people may not like the answer to this one, but, you know, we've lived without you guys for a while. I think that, and we still can run government satisfactory, and it's not just government. It's industry and everything else. But I think that we should be more prepared for this budget than we normally would in the past.
Hey, Mark, I totally appreciate those comments. And I didn't know that you were, you know, going to lean that way. But I understand. I think, you know, we'll still get it done in a timely fashion. But I think what you're basically saying, too, is everybody needs to be on their toes and ready to, you know, maybe do what Mark is insinuating. And we've talked about this for a number of years now, too, you guys, to have an evaluation company come in. I get the questions all the time, you know, how come, you know, we get all kinds of new Microsoft or, you know, computer gizmos and gadgets that do stuff so much faster than the old paper and pen? And I'm like, I hear you, I hear you. It needs to be evaluated. We don't need to rubber stamp every time somebody comes in and says, I need a replacement. We need to evaluate that position before we say, okay. And so I can understand your comment there.
Thank you. Just before there's any other comments, microphone. Terry Gardner, if you could stop in, we've got some previous minutes that you need to sign, and then.
Randy, I did that over your little thing.
Did you? I'll take a look at it. I'll take a look. And then we have Maze. So Madam Auditor, if you're okay, I'll take these home, and I'll scan them and send them to Terry.
Yes.
Just to make sure. And then Councilman Santana, you need to sign one of these also.
Okay, and that's fine.
You want me to email it to you?
Well, or what they've done in the past, and I've gone in on a Sunday or what have you to 555, and it's in the mailbox, and I can go in with a mask and go up and sign and then leave. So whichever is easier for you guys.
I'll scan it, and you can sign it online.
Okay. I like that. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other comments?
Yes, I do.
Yep.
I just want to say to Tony Rodriguez sitting there, hey, dude, on a light side, way to run the show, okay? The other thing I'd like to, I'd like to submit a request, maybe. And I think, Mark, you are the Highway Department liaison. And I think, you know, as we know, Bob Young is retiring. And in fairness to the new director that's coming in, that we should get a complete inventory sheet so that he knows where he's starting. And we should, you know, get that submitted to us. I don't know what you guys, you know, your thoughts are, but Bob's been there a long time, and we've got a new guy coming in, and we do have equipment, as we know, that, you know, gets retired, or it, you know, what have you. It sometimes gets lost. So I would like Dwayne Warner, our new guy, to, you know, know what the heck he's coming into and what the inventory is, and then it's, you know, like we say, transparent to everybody.
Right. And, yeah, Dwayne is actually officially taking over, I think, at the end of this month, so 1st of July.
Yes, he is.
So they're changing roles. So Dwayne has been the number two guy this entire time, so.
Correct.
Yeah. So that's something I'm sure Mr. Yagowski will reach out to them about, so.
Is that something reasonable, Mark, and council members?
I agree.
I'll inquire about it, yes.
Yeah. Does anybody else have any comments? Mr. Mullenauer?
Just, well, I agree with the inventory. I think that's probably a good idea. But the other thing I wanted to mention is I know all of us know about the crash that occurred, I think it was Friday night with the sheriff's captain, Andrew Heineck. And I just want to wish him well and a speedy recovery.
Yeah, exactly. He's a lucky man, and our thoughts and prayers are out to him, and I think he's okay, so.
Yep, thank you.
Anybody else have any comments?
I'll make a motion to adjourn so I can enjoy my birthday.
We have a motion. Oh, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Well, at least we got a birthday, since we're not getting invited to a wedding. Yeah, no wedding invitation, but a birthday.
My front porch is available.
So all those in favor, oh, motion second? Second by Mr. Yagowski. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Good night.